Well, good evening. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone almost. And I guess happy rainstorm instead of snowstorm. And hopefully, any people here in the audience who have to travel north after classes tomorrow will go safely. So we'll be thinking of you. So it's Tuesday, November 26th at 7:00 PM. And we're in the council chambers in the city of Plattville. And I am calling the meeting of the common council to order. We'll start with roll call.
Jason Arts?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Robin Klein?
Here.
Isaac Shanley?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Barbara Stockhausen?
Here.
Tonight, we start our meeting with two public hearings. The first public hearing we will start with is the 2020 budget hearing. So it will have, it contains two parts, a resolution appropriating necessary funds for the operation and administration of the city, and then a resolution authorizing salaries and rates of pay for the next year. So we'll start with staff presentation and ask Nicola to do that. And for those of you in the audience, to our benefit, the screen is on the back of, in the back of the room, to your benefit, you have to turn around to see it.
All right, let's get started. So our budget process begins in June with the financial operations manager preparing spreadsheets for distribution to the department heads. And then the department heads review their budgets and submit those. Our process was just a little bit different this year because our former city manager, Karen Kurt, was leaving us sadly. And so she actually presented a preliminary city manager budget on August 13th to the council at a council work session. And then we moved forward with the budget process, including gathering information from the state. And on October 1st, the common council reviewed the CIP budget. And then October 8th, as acting city manager, I presented the updated city manager budget to the council, which the council reviewed in detail on October 15th. We did not actually need an additional budget review session on the 29th. And then the financial operations manager prepared a presentation for the general public for November 18th, for anybody that wanted to review that with her. And so now it's November 26th, and we have the public hearing for the 2020 budget. So I'd like to just start with providing some perspective on our budget, which we usually do, which helps just to refresh our memories on some of the major considerations in budgets from year to year. And the first one is financial sustainability. It's important as a city that we are financially sustainable. And we have two perspectives on that. The bond rate is perspective, and that is that the city has good financial policies, that we're not overly burdened by debt and have a pathway to pay off our debt, and that we have enough revenue to cover our ongoing expenses. And also that we have some good predictability in the, in our ability to capture revenue, which is basically the strength of our local economy. And then that we have sufficient cash reserves. So that's the bond rate is perspective on what is financial sustainability. And then we also have the city manager's perspective on financial sustainability. And that would be to make sure that we maintain our infrastructure in the city in a manner that will maximize life expectancy, that there is ongoing funding to address predictable replacement of our equipment and to repair our buildings. And then also that we reserve our borrowing for large capital projects that have a long life, and that we maintain some contingency funds in our budget for unexpected expenses and also opportunities. And then also, very important is that we pay a market competitive wage so that we can retain our talent here in the city and attract new talent when necessary, and that we're known as a good and stable employer so that we can attract employees when we have vacancies. So now to some Budget 101, some budget basics. We have to create a budget where revenues equal expenditures. We do have a balanced budget process here in the city. And our revenues come from places like state aid, from property taxes, from borrowing, and from various fees for city services. On the expenditure side, we have our regular operating expenses. And then we have our capital spending that we mentioned. Also, the debt service on our borrowings, so the debt payments. And then in some circumstances, if we have a TIF district that has a shortfall, we may have covering that shortfall as one of our expenditures. So I'd like to take a look at the revenues and to give you some perspective on the revenues. We often talk about the fact that a 1% increase in city property taxes nets only $40,000 for the general fund, which in the grand scheme of a $15 million budget is not very much. So we don't have a lot of maneuvering room in our budget. The total property taxes for the city run approximately $4.5 million. Then looking at another source of revenue, which is borrowing, you can see from this slide that we have two, two borrowing constraints. One is externally applied, and that is from the state. The state has a limit on municipality borrowing of 5% of our equalized value. And then we also have an internally imposed limit that the city has imposed on itself, which is 3.5% of our equalized value. And you can see there that we're currently sitting at approximately 62% of the state limit and 89% of the city's limit. Looking at some perspective on expenditures, we have four main components. The operating budget, which is the day-to-day cost of operating the city. The onetime costs for large capital items are CIP expenditures, the repayments on our loans, the debt service, and then, as we talked about, the TID districts if there is any shortfall that cannot be covered by fund balance. Digging a little deeper into our operating budget, our typical expenditures in the operating budget are wages and benefits, fuel, supplies, computers, phones, and the internet, small equipment, training, and insurance. And as I mentioned, we do not use onetime revenues for balancing our budget. We have to have a sustainable budget with revenues that we can count on from year to year to cover our expenditures. So if we are having trouble balancing our budget, we either have to increase our revenues somehow, or we need to decrease our expenditures. Looking at CIP, the best estimate that we have is that the city, on a conservative basis, needs at least $750,000 annually to spend on predictable CIP plans, items rather. And that does not include the road reconstruction that we do every year to maintain our roads. The items that would be covered typically in the $750,000 would be vehicle replacement, large equipment replacement, building repairs, improvements to our parks, and repairs to our sidewalks. And then we generally do borrow $1 to $2 million a year for street reconstruction. We do have a replacement or schedule for the street reconstruction, but we've not been able to keep up with that under our current budgetary constraints. And then some perspective on the TIF districts. So a TIF district is a defined geographic area where tax incremental financing is being used to spur economic development. The TIFs are separate funds from the regular city funds, and they have their own revenue and expenditure sources. If revenues exceed expenditures, so TID 5 would be an example of that, that's where Walmart and Menards are located, if revenues exceed expenditures, then the surplus amount goes into the fund balance for that district, which acts as like a savings account. And the TIF district may even be able to close early. And then the value that's been added to that district is added to the rest of the city's tax base. However, if expenses exceed revenues and there isn't fund balance to cover that shortfall, that would be our TID 6 industrial park, then the general fund must cover that shortfall. So this year, we completed an update of our long-range financial plan. And this is one slide from that plan. And this shows the impact on our debt service from a couple of different things. You can see in the left-hand column there, that is the debt service on our existing debt. And then you can see in the orange column, the projected support that will be need to, need to come from our budget for TID 6. TID 6 is currently operating at a deficit and is projected to need some financial support for covering its debt payments. And then in the green column is our projected continuing borrowing in the future for our street reconstruction. And so over to the right-hand side, you can see what's expected to happen to our debt service support in terms of how much we need to levy in taxes to cover our debt payments. And that's over on the right-hand side. So here in the bar chart, we're looking at the same information in a little bit more condensed form. So you can see here that we are gradually increasing our debt service in the coming five years. And the, the green portion there is the new debt that we're adding on. And of course, we're paying off our debt at the same time. And we have an internally imposed limit that we will not borrow new debt in excess of the debt that we retired in the previous year. And then the gray section at the top of those bars is the amounts that we're projecting that we will need to support for TID 6 in terms of debt payments. So that's given you some background and perspective on the budget as a whole. So now we're going to dig down into the actual budget for 2020 that's proposed itself. So here, we have a couple of slides that are summarizing by a fund, the overall budget. And you can see here, the general fund has expenditures of $8.3 million. And that's just a slight increase over the '29 budget, a change of about $9,000. The taxi bus fund is staying essentially the same. The debt service fund has an increase of about 1% or $15,000 to $1,547,000. And then the CIP budget has about a 12% increase in, in total expected expenditure from $2,264,000 to $2,530,000. Then looking at the other funds, we have our TID districts there represented in the total expenditures for them. You can see there that TID 4 has an increase of 15%. TID 5 has a decrease in expenditure of 7%. And TID 6 is about the same, and TID 7 also has a decrease of 8%. And the redevelopment authorities budget is staying the same. And we have a new budget for 2020, which is the event center budget. And that is, that $10,000 of revenue and expenditure in that budget is just a very preliminary estimate of what we think it might both generate in revenues and then costs to maintain. So there you can see the overall 2020 expenditures are $15,765,054. Any questions so far from the council or anybody else? All right. So moving on, now we'll look at just the tax levy for the 2020 budget. And you can see here that the total tax levy for 2020 is 4,000, 4 million, sorry, And that is about a 3.8% increase over the 2019 budget. And the most significant change you can see there is in our CIP tax levy. And that's because in 2019, we had both a shift in our debt service budget that was quite significantly upwards. And at the same time, we had a couple of revenue sources that were onetime, and we were able to use those to fund CIP. So our CIP tax levy dropped a little bit, and this year it's coming back up to that $356,000 level. So I mentioned that I had presented to the council the city manager proposed budget. And now I'm going to just walk through changes that have taken place to that budget since I presented it. So the first one is an increase in revenue of $8,500, which is primarily from the, an increase in state aid for municipal services. And we received that information after we met with the council to review the city manager budget. And then we can see there also, there was a decrease of $27,000 in museum grant revenue. And then on the expenditure side, we have some decreases in, in museum intern wages, in street lighting for the trails, in cemetery outlay, in the city manager wage for 2020, and in the city, and an increase of 1,607 in the city manager contingency line item. And then at the bottom there is the event center also, which we've, which is a budget neutral item, but we've put it into the budget now so everybody can see it. Any questions from the council on these changes? So now we're going to walk through the, the general fund 2020 budget. First, we're going to just take a look at where our revenues come from. And you can see there that the majority of our revenues come from intergovernmental sources, as in state aid and sometimes federal grants, that kind of thing. And then you can also see that we have property tax revenue of about 32%. And, and then also, public charges for services and fees, permits, and so forth. And, and then special assessments is in there as well. And we have some other taxes that amount to about 8% of our total revenues for the general fund. So when we look at the 2019 budget as compared to the 2020 budget, we have some larger sums that were increased from one budget to the other. The fire inspection fees were increased by $38,500. We'll come back to those. General transportation age from the state came up $32,000. Garbage and refuse fees were increased by $26,500. We, that's a, I'm sorry, that's a revenue item, a fee that is paid by residents for those services. Our expenditure restraint revenue increased from the state by $11,500. Municipal services aid increased. We had some additional room tax. Net revenue and personal property aids and camping fees also increased in the 2020 budget. And as mentioned before, there was a decrease in the museum grant from, as compared to 2019, and then a decrease in video and cable service fees. And feel free to jump in from the council if you have any questions about any of these items. Now, looking at general fund expenses by department, or these are our functional expenditure categories. And you can see there that the largest consumer of expenditures is the public safety segment, which is PD, fire, and building inspection. And then we have culture and recreation at about 21%. Public works, which is maintaining the streets and street lighting, garbage and recycling. And then the general government, which covers city manager, city clerk and elections, finance, insurance, assessing, communications and building services, and probably a couple of other things thrown in there as well. So we did have increases in our operating expenses. We have a 2% increase in this budget for wages. And also, we have staff in our police department that are in the union, and so under the union contract, we have some step increases for those officers. And the amount of those comes to about $116,000. And then this budget also includes moving the fire chief position from a part-time position to a full-time position. And the cost of that change is approximately $60,000. And then, as I mentioned before, we, we have an increase in the garbage and recycling contract. That's covered by an increase in the fees for garbage and recycling, and that amounts to $26,500. We have an increase in the elections. Next year's going to be a very busy year for elections. And that's an increase over, over this year's budget for $17,000. And then also some increases for street lighting and IT security upgrades. And then just to expand a little bit on the fire chief position change, in order to fund that change, there were three sources. There were some stipends paid to some members of the department to provide some coverage because of the part-time nature of the fire chief position. But with that position becoming full-time, then it was possible to eliminate those stipends. There was a small portion of the increased costs that's shared by the townships via the cost allocation formula. And then the remaining balance that needed to be covered is through the increase in the fire inspection fee from $35 to $70. And then let's talk about some decreases.
Question on the fire chief. What was the fire chief's cost, his salary, whatever you call it, before when he was an assistant, or whatever you want to call it, part-time?
I don't have that in, at the top of my head, but I could look it up quick if it's essential for the budget.
Looking at the fire chief's salary, and then with these changes here, what is the difference between $60,000 and what has been removed? Do you understand my question?
Okay. Is that something that I can come back to after the meeting and provide to you?
That'd be fine.
Okay.
I could look it up in the budget.
It is in, it is in the detailed line item budget, yes. All right. So operating decreases, a little bit more happy news. So the health insurance decreased by $67,000 in the 2020 budget. We were able to negotiate a 3% decrease in our health insurance coverage, which is really quite astonishing and, and good news. And that accounted for about $27,000 of that decrease. And the rest of the decrease comes from changes in our staffing demographic and changes to enrollment in the plans. Sometimes, you know, a new employee might take a single plan versus a retiring employee might have had a family plan, that kind of thing. We also had an RFP for assessing services, and we are not doing a full revow, so we were able to reduce assessing expenses by $21,000. And other line items that decreased were the city manager compensation, the cemetery outlay, our wage and benefit contingency line item in the city manager budget. Our workers' comp insurance went down a little bit due to some things that we implemented. The grant writing budget, the art hall is no longer, and so the expenses related to that are gone. And, and then a couple of other things there on that slide. Okay, so looking next at the, that was the general fund budget. Now we're going to look at the capital improvement budget and the proposed projects for 2020. I'm not going to walk through all of these in detail, but you can see there that a couple of things to highlight are the Phase 2 of the city hall remodel, and the street reconstruction projects for which we will borrow, Market Street, Bradford Street, and Irene Street. The beginning stage of the Business Highway 151 Safety Improvement Project, which is funded in the majority by the state, but that's our portion for the design work. Excuse me. And then we have some other equipment items. We might have to bring this to a sudden close, for which everybody would applaud. Excuse me. Okay, so there you can see the remaining of our, our proposed capital improvements. And those are funded through the tax levy and also through a transfer from our unassigned fund balance. And that amount is $755,990. Okay. And then there are some other sources of funding for the CIP, the will tax, which is $120,000, and that is designated for thin overlay projects, which is a, a, a less longstanding way to maintain our roads. And then also our borrowing of $1,190,000. Okay. So we're just going to quickly look at our TIF budgets for 2020. And we have four TID districts. And the, the budget for the industrial park, TID 4, is not, is, is going to have a zero or neutral budget. That is being extended in 2020 to cover an affordable housing program. And then TID 5 will have a surplus of $535,877. And that is able to be transferred to TID 7 to help TID 7 cover its costs. And then TID 6, you can see there, does have a shortfall of $21,000, and that will be covered by the unassigned fund balance in 2020. Okay, so we're just going to get towards the end here and look at some budget analytics. Probably the most key factor in our budget as we, as we look at it, is the tax rate. So here you can see the assessed tax rate for 2020 is 7.887 as compared to 7.734 in 2019. That's a 2% increase. And that means that an owner of a $150,000 home here in Plattville would pay $1,183 in city property taxes, which is an increase of $23 annually from, from this current year, 2019. And then we can, whoops, we can see here a breakdown of a tax dollar for property taxes in the, in the city of Plattville. And you can see there that there are several taxing jurisdictions, and those are demonstrated to the Plattville School District, the City of Plattville, Grant County, and Southwest Tech. And so sometimes though people come and pay their taxes to the city in January, of course, you can see here that much of those tax dollars don't stay in the city. They are distributed to the other taxing jurisdictions. And then also, we can see those jurisdictions levies, the last budget compared to this budget. You can see there that Grant County's budget levy is staying about the same. Likewise, Southwest Tech, City of Plattville has a 3.82% increase in its levy, and Plattville School District has a 2.27% increase in its levy. And then I think it's very interesting to take a look at a 20-year review of our assessed tax rate. And you can see there at the top that the school district's tax rate and the city's tax rates have both declined in the last 20 years. There's been some ups and downs in there, but overall, there's a, 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 a small decline in the tax rate. And then at the bottom there, you can see demonstrated the county and the Southwest Tech's tax rate. Sometimes we think taxes are only ever going up, but in actual fact, sometimes they do go down. And then we also like to look at how we're doing compared to our peer cities. And there you can see in the last six years that in actual fact, our tax rate as it was for 2019 was the same as it was for the 2013 budget year. There's only one other municipality on that list that, that is in that same, at least so I thought. Maybe I made a mistake there. So we're just going to move right along from that. But that is correct. So the City of Plattville's tax rate has, has not, has, has changed over the last six years, but six years ago, it was the same level as it is, as it was last year. Oh, I guess I was going to say that the only other one is Menominee, and their tax rate actually did decrease over And their tax rate actually did decrease over the rate that they had six years ago. But I was going to mention that their equalized value for their city is like 1.1 billion as compared to the City of Platteville, which is about 700 million. So they have a much larger tax base to spread their tax levy over. And then just to wrap up, there's a few things that we've been looking at as a city. Some financial outlooks there that we have to be concerned about, that we do know that over the coming years, our operational expenses are expected to outpace net new construction. We know about TID Six and debt payment support, and we know that we need $750,000 annually for CIP spending. And we will not be able to exceed levy limits starting in 2024, as we have in the past. But if we do get some development in TID Six and citywide, that is definitely going to help us address those financial challenges. And then some of those same things are demonstrated here with some more detail for our future considerations. And I can entertain any questions on those. And then just finally, I think it's always helpful to just remind ourselves that what we actually get for our tax dollars. So based on this 2020 proposed budget, a home assessed at $150,000 in the city, as I mentioned previously, would pay $1,183 of city property taxes. And that works out to be approximately $99 per month. So if we think about what we can buy with $99 a month, perhaps one month of cellphone services, depending on how many teenagers you have on your cellphone plan, maybe one month of a very small car lease, possibly a golf lesson, or maybe dinner and movie with the family, depending also on how many teenagers are in your family. Or for that same money, you can get all of these. 24/7 police protection, 24/7 emergency medical services, 24/7 fire protection, snow and ice removal from the streets, beautifully maintained parks, street lighting, elections, library, museums, and recreation, and paved and maintained streets. Any questions from the council or from anybody else? All right.
Thank you, Nicola.
You're welcome.
I have to reclaim my computer here. If you were checking out the detail of the budget. So that's a staff presentation applicant statement. Do we have any public statements in favor of the budget? And I believe I have one person who has asked to speak about the city budget in favor, and that is Bill Kloster.
Bill Kloster, 975 Highbury Circle in Platteville. I'm here to give strong support to two specific items of the proposed 2020 budget. The first being the money allotted for the study to determine what we need for a new fire station and learning center. Some people may think that now's not the time to do this, that we should wait until we have the money. I'm here to tell you the city will never have the money. And it's imperative that we do this study so that we have the necessary tools and ammunition to seek federal, state funding, grants, public dollars, private dollars, whatever it takes to get this job done, because this is something we desperately need to do. The other item I want to talk about is the support for the airport. It was briefed in the budget briefing by Nicola that there's a relatively small amount, a little less than $15,000, going to support acquisition of new snow removal equipment. And I'm not talking about a snow blower for the yard. I'm talking about a $250,000 tractor with a snow blade and a snow blower and a sweeper that is necessary to keep the runways open at the airport. And also a mower to cut the very large amount of grass that is out at the airport. That also has to be maintained and kept neat and clean, not only for appearance sake, but also for aircraft safety as well. And the other part was to support a master plan that is being done for the airport to determine what we're going to look like in the future. I just want to add that in the past couple of weeks, I had the opportunity to meet with a gentleman who has been solicited to be a recruiter for industries coming to Platteville. They're going to try and help partner us up with industries that may be interested in coming to Platteville. And out of the many things we discussed, he was very interested in the airport and what the airport had to offer. And I gave him some information on the airport because he, like I, believes that the airport is a very, very strong motivator and an economic incentive when you talk about bringing people to this area to start businesses, especially large businesses that employ a large amount of people. Thank you. Well, I just want to close by saying that I very strongly encourage the city council to maintain those two items in your 2020 budget.
Okay, that is the only person I've had registered to speak in favor of the budget. Are there any public statements against the budget? I've had no registrations. Are there any public statements in general about the budget? Again, I've had no registrations. So do we have any council discussion?
I don't have any discussion, but I would like to say thank you to the staff for all the hard work, for putting this together. And especially when, unfortunately, as Nicola said, our city manager decided to take a job at a different location. So I know that made it probably more difficult. So again, thank you for your hard work.
I have one item that I'm not recalling the detail. The mining museum, $20,000. Is that something that we had explained to us? Or had I forgotten?
No, actually. So, you know, I'm glad to explain that. So there was a $27,000 grant in 2019, and that amount carried over into the 2020 budget erroneously. And it wasn't discovered until after the city manager review with the council of that budget. And once I became aware of it, then we had to take that out of the budget. So that's what that was.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, we have two resolutions. We've talked about the budget, necessary funds for operation and administration. We have also a resolution authorizing salary and rates of pay for officers and permanent employees. And Nicola touched in this on her, in her budget presentation that we had built in a 2% increase plus step increases in the police department as required by the contract with that union.
Yes.
So I believe we've heard all of the presentations and all of the statements. If there are no other council questions or if there is no additional council discussion, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Barb Stockhausen and a second by Ken Killian to close the public hearing on the 2020 budget. Common council action. I'm looking for motions on a couple of resolutions.
I move to adopt Resolution 1919, appropriating the necessary funds for the operation and administration of the City of Platteville for the year 2020 in the amount of $15,765,054 as presented.
Okay, I think Candace is going to tell me we had a motion and a second on closing the public hearing, and I forgot to call for the vote.
Yes, and I'm sorry, I did not catch who made the motion or the second.
Barb Stockhausen and Ken Killian to close. Now we can vote. Sorry.
That's okay. Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and Barb has already proposed, made a motion to adopt Resolution 1919, appropriating necessary funds for operation and administration of the City of Platteville for the year 2020. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Barb, second by Eileen. Now we'll vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have another resolution dealing with the budget, and that is authorizing salary and rates of pay for officers and permanent employees, excluding union personnel, library personnel, and the city manager for the upcoming year. Do I hear a motion?
Resolution 1920, authorizing salaries and rates of pay of the officers and permanent employees, excluding union personnel, library personnel, and city manager for the year 2020.
Second.
We have a motion by Eileen and a second by Isaac. We'll vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
As we move away from this budget hearing and budget discussion, again, I echo Eileen's thanks to the staff for the work that they put into this budget and the many presentations. And just for the benefit of those in this room, it may seem like we didn't discuss this very much, but let me tell you, we've been discussing this budget since August. So just so that you know that. All right, we have a second public hearing tonight, and this is on ordinance 1910, annexation and rezone. This deals with the Chestnut Street right-of-way and adjacent property. We'll start with a staff presentation.
Yes, this is regarding the portion of Chestnut Street between the Roundabout and Business Highway 151. When the Roundabout was constructed, the Chestnut Street right-of-way was actually relocated slightly, so it's basically dealing with the current right-of-way and the former right-of-way. But at the time that construction took place, the jurisdiction of this area switched from Grant County, County Highway D, to the City of Platteville as far as maintenance of that area. But at this point, it is not actually located within the City of Platteville, so we're maintaining a road that really isn't within our jurisdiction. We have an agreement that says we'll do so, but it seems to make sense that we make it part of the City of Platteville. So we'd like to annex it to do that. So it's primarily right-of-way, but there is a very small sliver of privately-owned property. Dave and Sue Kais own a, it's basically a remnant parcel that's adjacent to some other vacant property that they own. We cannot annex the right-of-way without annexing their property as well because we cannot create a town island. In other words, a township property that's surrounded by the city. So they are agreeable to annexing their property as well, so they have a petition to do that. So this agreement would, or the ordinance would also annex their property with the right-of-way. Since there is some privately-owned property, we would like to change the zoning jurisdiction of this property. At the same time, it's a lot cleaner than doing it at a later date. So since it is mostly right-of-way, it doesn't really matter to the city. What our right-of-way is zoned, it's a street right-of-way. But their property that they have in the city already is zoned R3 multifamily. And basically, that remnant would always be treated as part of that. So we would also recommend that the zoning be changed to R3 multifamily residential to keep that consistent. Any questions?
Any questions up the staff? Okay, we really don't have an applicant. The Kais are not here to, I guess it's really the city that's mostly the applicant.
Correct.
I have had no one registered to speak in favor of this. Is there anybody who wants to speak in favor of this annexation and rezone? I've had nobody registered to speak against it. Actually, I've had nobody at all register to speak about it. Is there any council discussion? I guess I need a motion to close the public hearing. Close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Eileen and a second by Ken to close the public hearing. We'll vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and now we need a little action on this ordinance 1910.
I make a motion to approve the annexation of the property described in the attached ordinance and of the rezoning of the property to R3 multifamily residential.
Okay, we have a motion. And a motion by Isaac and a second by Robin. We'll vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that ends the public hearing portion of this meeting. We'll move on now to the next agenda item, which is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate if you would prefer separate discussion or action on any of the following. Payment of bills, appointments to boards and commissions. I have none tonight. Licenses, a temporary Class B to sell fermented malt beverages to the Platteville Youth Diamond Sports at 75 North Bonson Street. That would be in this building, the City of Platteville Auditorium, for Flatland Calvary at The Big Secret on Thursday, December 12, from noon to midnight. One- and two-year operator licenses, and there were several names listed in your packet, and taxi driver licenses. And finally, the 2021 cost-sharing agreement with Grant County as it deals with elections. Do I have any, do I have a motion?
I move to approve all items listed under consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion by Jason and a second by Eileen to approve the consent calendar as presented. We'll vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next on our agenda is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. And I believe I have one person who has provided a request to speak, and that would be Mr. Ben.
Thank you. I added the sports on there, so.
Thank you.
Ben Belkey, 800 South Chestnut Street. So for those of you who don't know me, my name is Ben Belkey. I'm the student body president at the University of Wisconsin Platteville. Ever since I won the election, I've been coming to these city meetings, hoping to help within the communication and continue to explain what's been happening at our university. First, I'll start out with this draft that I sent out. This is the draft that I mentioned that I would be presenting. It is just a draft. There's some misspellings, there's some typos in there because it was done quickly today in between classes. But nonetheless, the substance of it is in there. Pretty much, I mentioned, you know, Platteville brings in a lot of students from outside the state, so having some infrastructure that's here that's appealing to students when they come through. This is about the grant, by the way, that the city's working for. You know, since they are all around where students live and how they commute from classes to and from, both walking and driving, showing some support in the reasons why it's important and the importance of the university and how it plays into that infrastructure. So that's what that letter of support is. Again, it's a draft, but nonetheless, that's kind of the substance and the angle that I think works best for the students. I also mentioned and went over with it with the Student Senate, and they were also on board with it, too. So now on to the agenda items. Women in government. Again, thank you, thank you, too, for coming to the university and spreading your knowledge about women in government and things like that. I know it was really great, and there was a really good turnout, so I really appreciate you guys coming. Also commencement, that's December 14. That's the Fall Commencement Day. That's the fall commencement day. I know a lot of people are pretty excited and counting down for that. We had the regent visit, so Tori Tiedemann, who's one of the student, who's the non-traditional student regent, he's coming to campus December seventeenth. Great timing on that one. Also, today I had a phone call with Regent Woodmansey, and she's the traditional student regent. I just had that really good communication, continuing to connect with them. The lieutenant governor, he came to campus today. It was really great to interact with him. He came to the Sustainable and Renewable Energy Systems program. We showed him around the lab, things like that. So it was really great. Got to have a lot of time with him to talk about certain things about the university. So it was really great to have him on the campus and show him around. The sports, these are from up until the end of the year, things that are happening, the home games. And then the last thing I want to mention is, again, thank you for having me do these, letting me speak at your meetings and take up some of your time. But it's really great, and I appreciate being able to open up the conversations and, and being able to work together on certain things like this. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are commencements, do you know if there's room for community members at this point since the graduations have been split up, or do you need to have tickets?
I am not sure of that question. I don't know if anybody...
There's plenty of room.
Sure, yeah. I know for my brothers, I was able to show up, so I don't think we had tickets.
Yeah, I think they've just continued to practice the tickets, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
That is the only person I had registered to speak in citizens' comments, observations, and petitions. So we will move on to the next agenda item, which are the reports of boards and commissions and committees. The first, Jason, there are two sets of minutes from the Community Safe Routes Committee.
The only thing I would like to add is that I received a request from the chair that the vote on the ATV ordinance scheduled for December tenth be postponed until the committee has a chance to review the ordinance. This was omitted from the November agenda.
Development Authority Board, Eileen.
Nothing to add.
Parks, Forestry, and Recreation Committee, Jason.
Nothing to add.
Water and Sewer Commission, any of the three of you?
No.
Public Transportation, Isaac?
Nothing.
Oops. Now, the last one, Commission on Aging, Barb?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Then we'll move now to the action items on our agenda tonight. We have, as the first agenda item, Contract nine nineteen, snow and ice removal.
Back at it again. Glad that we haven't had any lately. Okay. Every year, the city contracts out removal of snow and ice on sidewalks in front of properties that do not shovel their walks. Traditionally, the contractor bills the city, and then we add an administrative fee, and that is billed to the property owner. Now, based on the work last time, we rebid the package. We sent it to three local firms, and we received three bids. The bid tabulation isn't closed. Just to document or explain what we have here, code enforcement officer documents and measures snowfall when a snowfall is two inches or more, or a compilation or multiple events that result in a snowfall of two inches or more. The CEO documents with a photo, goes around to all sidewalks after twenty-four hours to document potential violations, places a door hanger on each parcel and documents the address. After an additional twenty-four hours, the CEO checks those sidewalks that were looked at the day before. If the violation still exists, the CEO takes a date-time stamp photo to be used as our before photo. CEO provides the contractor a list of those addresses that were still in violation at that second check. It is not a requirement for the owner or tenant to receive the notice to be in violation. It's a courtesy only. Now, the contractor shall be paid for all those sidewalks regardless of condition. So if the owner or tenant happens to go out there five minutes after the CEO takes that before photo and shovels it, the contractor still shovel, still gets paid for it, and the owner still gets billed for it. The contractor takes a date-time stamp photo showing the after condition and invoices the city. Staff has directed the CEO to be more stringent in the interpretation of snow removal. The desired condition is that sidewalks are clear the entire width, or as we described, grass to grass. At a minimum, they need to be passable for wheelchair-bound persons, which is thirty-six inches. This, last year, the bid prices are as listed. This year, the prices increased slightly to just under twenty-four cents a square foot or forty-eight dollar minimum per location for snow only, just under forty-five cents a square foot or forty-eight minimum for hard-packed snow and ice. Contrary to the last time we brought it here, there is no call-out charge. So that is going to go forward. Our recommendation is that when we do our fee schedule update for two thousand and twenty, that we will increase the administrative fee to cover the additional effort by the code enforcement officer. Our recommendation is to award the bid to Southwest Lawn Care at the bid price, at the bid prices specified.
Okay, questions?
I have a question. Under recommendation, it says for the snow only, it's forty-eight dollars minimum, and it says for the hard-packed snow, it's forty-eight dollars minimum. What if you have both the same? I thought you'd maybe have the hard-packed snow a higher minimum.
That's, that was a decision by the contractor when, when the contractor bid it. The minimum price is, is a minimum based on the frontage that, the, the amount of sidewalk that the contractor needs to do. That's why I said it's twenty-three point nine cents per square foot or forty-four point nine cents per square foot. So if you extend that out for the length of the sidewalk, if the per, per square foot price is less than the minimum, then the contractor gets that minimum charge.
The worst you could make, you could gain on the loose snow. Is that what you're saying?
No, it's twenty-three, well, it's a forty-eight dollar minimum to, to...
For both.
Yeah, for both. The minimums are the same on both, right? Any other questions? Are we ready to take action on this?
I'd make a motion. I'd make a motion to award the bid to the Southwest Lawn Care at the bid price of point two-three-nine per square foot or forty-eight dollar minimum per location for snow only, and for point four-four-nine per square foot or forty-eight dollar minimums per location for hard-packed snow and ice.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Isaac and a second by Barb to award this contract to Southwest Lawn Care per their bid. We'll vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item on our action agenda is a mortgage adjustment for city and RDA loan at twenty-five East Main Street. We'll start with staff presentation.
Yes, the city and the RDA both have loans provided to Element Investments to do some remodeling, improvement work at twenty-five East Main Street building. The RDA's loan was originally at eighty thousand dollars, and the city's was originally at a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. The current balance for those loans is approximately a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. These loans were secured by a mortgage on the property that is in a second position to a private lender. The private lender currently has a mortgage valued at three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The developer, Element, has some additional work that needs to be done on the, the building to complete that project. Most importantly, from the city's standpoint, is they need to install a fire hydrant to provide adequate fire access service to that building. And then there's some additional work needed to be done on the building itself. But the developer needs some additional funds to complete that work, so they're working with the private lender that does have the first mortgage on that property to obtain the additional financing, which they're looking for is a hundred thousand dollar increase. So even though they're not asking for that additional funding to come from the city or the RDA, since we do have a mortgage on the property and that debt would be in front of our debt as a first position, the city and the RDA do have to approve that modification. So the increase of the first mortgage would go from three hundred and twenty thousand to four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Our mortgage amount would stay the same. The current debt would not change for our request, so there's no additional city funding, no additional RDA funding, but it does impact our, our position as far as our security on this property. The RDA has already considered this request and has recommended approval, so since the, the city and the RDA both have to approve it, the city has to approve the same request. So the RDA recommends approval, and staff would also recommend approval. Any questions?
Any questions of Joe? The owner of the property is in the chamber. If anybody has questions, I won't ask Judy to come to the microphone unless somebody has specific questions. Questions by council. So do I hear a, a motion?
I would move to approve the request to subordinate the city's loan for the property at twenty-five East Main to a private first mortgage in the amount of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Eileen and a second by Barb to approve this request. We'll vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, also, for the benefit of those in the audience, the city council operates on a, a presentation that, that enables people, one meeting, we have just information and discussion on an item, and after that information and discussion, the item can be and often is moved up to action. So these two action items that you have seen tonight were thoroughly discussed at a previous meeting, and now we're going to move into the information and discussion items on this agenda, the first of which is the ordinance, the ordinance ATV, UTV ordinance and route designation. And we'll start with staff presentation. I believe that's the chief.
Sure. Trial ordinance governing ATV, UTV use in the city was adopted in August two thousand and eighteen. This ordinance is now expired effective November fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. A work session was held by the council on December, excuse me, November twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, and extensive discussion was ensued, and there were a number of areas of consensus that hopefully were arrived at. Some of these included approving a ATV, UTV, which has many of the same provisions as the trial ordinance, and then approving the ATV...
Yeah, you have to...
Sorry. Approving an ATV, UTV ordinance that would have hours of operation from six AM to ten PM, potentially approving routes which would be open year-round, and approving, potentially again, approving all city streets, or opening all city streets to ATV, UTV traffic with a number of areas of concern due to connectivity issues. Those were elaborated on a little bit more in the staff report, and we can address those as discussion would take place tonight. One question that was called out in particular regarding whether the city can set bond amounts for offenses such as ONVI. We can do that, but in this case, that would require extensive revision to the ordinance to include the many, approximately twenty-eight related ONVI offenses. Staff made a recommendation on this in that if the city council desires routes, a successor ordinance needs to be adopted. This ordinance should include additions from lessons learned during the trial period covered by the previous ordinance. Staff recommends opening all city streets to ATV, UTV traffic except Business Highway one fifty-one from Valley Road to the east city limits, year-round from six AM to ten PM daily.
Okay, questions of staff?
Doug, I was the one that had inquired about the OWI.
Yes.
So I know we had talked about, or that's in the ordinance right now, that we were able to set like a, a certain amount for speeding violations. Would that, would a OWI be similar to that? Couldn't we just set like one rate, or no?
Not in, in this case, because a lot of those are, the varying offenses related to ONVI are penalty enhancers due to maybe a higher BAC level or traveling with a minor in the vehicle or things of that nature. So that, I think you would want to stay true to that philosophy, that you would have graduated penalties for that as well.
And currently, the fine is set at, the DNR has it set at like four something, just like a straight fine?
Correct.
Okay.
For the initial ONVI, your run-of-the-mill ONVI.
Okay, and that, and would that be like the same for subsequent? Like if somebody gets pulled over, they get one ticket on their ATV, and then they get subsequent, would it still just be a fine each time?
It would be for offenses committed with an ATV, UTV, because they are recreational vehicles.
So it would always be the same fine? It would, there would be no graduation? So I could get ten, I could get ten fines, and it wouldn't go against my license, and there would be no record of it?
There would be a graduation in that offenses within a certain period would be more, but again, it would not go against your driving record.
So DNR accumulates or, or collates or whatever these offenses?
They track those.
So they track those? So that if there were a habitual offender, even not in the city of Platteville, but somebody who perhaps was ticketed in the city of Platteville, but had previously been ticketed in a different community, that would be...
A greater monetary fine.
There would be a greater monetary fine, and that information would be available to the person writing the ticket.
Correct.
That helps, yes. Thank you.
Sometimes I have to get it down to words I can understand.
Go ahead.
Other questions?
I'd like to go through the items on the first page at the bottom, and it says, "Staff would like the council to be aware of the following areas of concern due to connectivity issues." Connectivity issues. Lancaster Street at the north city limits. It says ATVs, UTVs are not allowed on eighty-one. Now, is that a state law?
It's a state highway, so that by state law, we can, the municipality can allow ATV, UTV traffic on any highways, state highways within our jurisdiction that are... that are signed for less than thirty-five miles an hour or less.
So this, this particular road, I, I, on my map, I drew it out. I drew Lancaster Street out to the end as far as the city limit. Now, the speed limit goes above thirty-five, is that the reason?
Within the, eh, in a very small portion of the
Very small portion.
Of the city portion, there
Right, from Ridge Avenue north.
North.
Uh, for, I don't know, a block.
Correct.
It's a city street, but it's at thirty-five miles an hour.
It's forty uh
It's more than that.
It's forty?
Forty.
So we would not have the ability to govern that.
So because that exceeds forty miles an hour, that's not within our jurisdiction to allow, that's within the city limits?
Correct.
And so it's, we
We don't have the ability without DOT permission to allow ATV, UTV traffic on that
On that piece of our, of the road that we maintain. And of course, we have no authority over the piece of the road between there and Old Lancaster Road that we don't maintain.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, my next, my next question is that uh, well, I was thinking of connecting to Old Lancaster Road. Old Lancaster Road is what, a county road? And it goes through Banner Road, where the cross is eighty-one. So that was the reason for my drawing Lancaster Road in.
We'd have to get permission.
We'd have to get permission.
And the township would have to, to request that.
And then no, no, next one, Noelwood is the same situation, eighty, eighty-one. That is State Highway.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, Northwater Street and Northside Drive, again, that's the uh state?
Correct.
Highway eighty?
Right.
And then Eastside Road, um
That's a little different.
That's forty miles an hour in one spot next to the hospital.
Correct, but that is a city street and we do have the ability to
Which changes that?
Correct, we would not have to get DOT permission to do that.
Then my next question is, why can't we do it with um going out to Walmart, starting at um Valley Road? That's a, that's a Business one fifty-one. Now, who has control of Business one fifty-one?
That is one of the areas where staff did not make the recommendation to have ATV, UTV traffic on it.
But my thinking of that was that there's a lot of business along that street. Highway one fifty-one business and uh that should be included.
And that's something that uh we're gonna leave up to the council to make that decision.
Doug, could I ask a clarifying question? So, um, and a lot of the ordinance is not just ours. The thirty-five mile an hour speed limit has been something that seems common. Is there, is that like a recommendation by the state? Is there a reason why they cap it at thirty-five?
That is just kind of the, a very common speed limit within municipalities, a common, common upper limit. And it, and it was something that originally when ATV, UTV uh routes became more prevalent in communities, that they used kind of as the break-off point.
But are there, eh, eh, are there any safety considerations that kind of go along with that in terms of like how, how fast uh a UTV or an ATV can go on pavement safely?
I'm not aware of, you know, any guidelines regarding that.
Okay.
Is thirty-five mile an hour a state statute um or, or state rule?
State rule.
It's state rule, the thirty-five miles an hour.
Okay, thank you.
That's the speed limit on county road?
Uh, the, the ATV, UTVs um by state law cannot travel on roads with a speed limit that is higher than thirty-five miles an hour unless uh special permission has been received from the state, unless it's in a, it's on a city road um and the city uh makes that allowance, if I'm, is that correct?
Could you
I saw one going on Willow Branch Road and I would say the speed was more than thirty-five. They apparently were going to Ellenboro.
That's the township road.
I
Talking about within municipalities?
Actually, Ken, I think that the uh law is not how fast the ATV can go. It deals with this posted speed on the road. And I think that an ATV can travel at the speed that's allowed on the road.
Correct.
So if the speed limit on a road is thirty-five or forty-five or fifty-five, whatever it is, the ATV can travel at that speed. It's if the road is posted as thirty-five miles an hour or more that the state and/or the city and/or probably the county has to grant permission.
Establish it as a ATV, UTV route.
The one deals with the, with how fast the ATV is going. The other deals with the posted uh limit on the road. Ken, do you wanna go on through these? We were at Business Highway one fifty-one. There are two more uh items, Southwest Road?
Well, Southwest Road, as far as mine, I, I did not include um Southwest Road. And let's see, and Longhorn Drive was addressed by the
By the university.
By the letter tonight, so they don't want Longhorn Drive included. Also, I, I tried to um, um, not designate any streets that go by schools, except for B. B was in our previous ordinance. Broadway Street, not Broadway, not B. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other council questions?
The, or, not Lancaster Street, but Highway eighty-one, which is Lancaster Street.
Lancaster.
Does the county, eh, is allowing ATV use up to the city limits on that highway?
I mean, in from the north, they are not.
They are not?
Not, eh, I think that um they're being petitioned to do that, but it's, at this point, it has not been opened, to my knowledge.
Thank you.
I believe that the la- at our work session, that it was noted that they would need to make application or a petition or something and that the ATV, UTV club was prepared to do that. Any other questions of staff? Otherwise, I have several people who have uh asked to speak. Um, and one that has simply uh registered. So I will first announce that a person registered against this ordinance is Danica Larson. And the first person then that I will ask to speak is Evan Larson.
Um, Evan Larson, ten ten Seventh Avenue. Uh, thank you very much for your time to share my thoughts. Um, and I'll just start with a personal preference is that I don't feel that, well, I don't want the city streets opened up to um universal access. That's a personal preference. I know there's reasonable people on all sides and that's how I feel. Um, the reasons that I feel that, um, I grew up in the country, I had an old Kawasaki. Um, we used it in the woods, we used it to haul deer, we drove down to the river, things like that. Um, had it as a kid, didn't always make the best decisions. Um, but I made it through. Um, I live in town now, I walk, um, and I bike around because it's good for me. Um, I like quieter spaces. Um, these vehicles can be loud, I know they're not all loud. Um, these are my personal feelings. Um, and I don't know all the reasons for, you know, proposing that all city streets are open. Um, and I know there might be some really good reasons for that, but I'd also like to make the point and that I feel really strongly on this is that um generally, I don't think of our society as an either-or. And I know that there are people in our community that support the use of UTVs, ATVs, um, but I also know there are people that don't. And I think that as a council, you owe it to the city to represent the people who voted for you. And I think that there are a lot of um opinions. And so, um, you know, if it's for a business purpose, I see access to businesses and, and, and maybe a tuning of the current policy. But I'm not sure I see the, or understand the um, the value or the efficiency or what exactly we gain by opening it up to the whole city. Um, and I would also like to say that um, as the council, you have um access to a lot of, a lot of people. And I think it's also important to listen and I think you do a really good job of that. Um, I know that um the Safe Routes Committee in town um hasn't had a chance to speak on this, I don't believe. Um, and I know that some people on that committee that would really like to. And so I would encourage you to not rush into the decision. Um, and if you have specific questions on data, because I know that people have pulled numbers to support or refute certain positions, but um have them bring those together and have them report out to you. And then listen to them and, and respect the expertise that they bring to the table. Um, and so I would really encourage you to think about it from that perspective and take your time on this because um it is an important conversation and it does reflect our community in a lot of ways. So that's what I wanted to say. I appreciate the time very much and I thank you for your consideration.
Okay, next I have uh Austin Polabitski who wants to speak against.
My name's uh Austin Polabitski, I'm a resident at five forty-five Jefferson. Uh, convenience, right? I think this ordinance is about convenience. It's about convenience for a small, select few of residents that have these and apparently the police department in the way that they police. Last year, when this was brought before the council, I felt the council did the prudent thing. They listened to all sides, they took proposals, they sent out a survey. And I'm assuming that you tried your best to gather all the information needed to make a sound decision. I thought the final resolution was well-crafted and was very reasonable. Tonight, the council seems to, you know, because I, I haven't heard about this until, you know, Monday, I guess, uh, behurrying an ordinance through to satisfy a select few residents while ignoring the half the city in the survey that opposed these routes at all, right? Need. Last year, the ATV, UTV groups came forth and put forward two main reasons for the need of the routes through Platteville. One, that it's particularly onerous to ride around the entire city just to get to destinations on the other side of it. That makes sense. Two, while not promised, it was explicitly and implicitly implied that ATVs and UTVs would be a boon for local, local tourism. A panacea that according to our local paper has not occurred in any measurable amount. Now, they want all streets open, and they did then, so that a select few could ride from their homes to any destination they choose, despite many other voices having concerns over safety, noise, congestion, and parking. Want. The police department finds it apparently inconvenient to police ATV, UTV traffic on a single route, maybe because people aren't used to the, the flow of traffic yet. Instead, we have people going on routes that they're not supposed to. And so they're recommending that the most efficient path forward would be to open all city streets because it would be less confusing. Again, despite half of the city not wanting that and only a few select residents owning these vehicles. Would it not be equally as efficient and convenient just to ban them outright? Right? We could just close all the routes, that would fix the inconvenience on policing. It wouldn't impact any businesses downtown because we haven't seen a measurable impact yet. And it would only inconvenience those that aren't city residents because they would have to go around the city now. I personally don't think that that's a good option. I think staying the course seems like a very sound decision. It meets most people's needs and it gets ATV and UTV traffic downtown on one main route that is clearly signed, easily policed, has a slower speed limit, and gets them to most of our businesses. It minimizes the impact on others throughout the city that for whatever their valid reasons are, do not want that traffic in their neighborhoods. It does not meet the convenience factor for a few residents that own ATVs, but neither does it meet the wants of those that lived on routes and didn't want them there in the first place. I think if the council's having a hard time deliberating about this, you could put it to the vote of the residents of the city, maybe. There's been quite an undue influence from those that don't live within the city coming forward and pushing this. Put it to your actual constituents, see what they want. But be sure to couch it appropriately, though. Something along the lines of, are you in favor of twelve-year-old and sixteen-year-olds driving through your neighborhood at night at thirty-five miles an hour? Now, you may laugh at this, but if we accept last year's anecdotal survey of people along a route from one of our council members, certainly you can accept my anecdotal survey of not these college students, but other college students that I talked to about this. When I asked avid outdoors students what they thought about opening all public routes in the city to ATV, UTV traffic, the response was more colorful than I can say here, but it amounted to, it would be a nightmare. And when asked why, the reasons were parking issues within the student-dominated residences, misuse of the vehicles, and drunk driving. There tend to be unintended consequences when you take actions that are not well-thought-out and I think that's something the council is keenly aware of. ATVs and UTVs are useful and fun for many people, my five-year-old son included. It's all he wants for Christmas. He wants a Gator or a mini ATV that he can ride around in the backyard. Those living in the countryside, on farms doing work, those that enjoy recreational riding on trails, those that need to access hard-to-access places that you can't get to by vehicle, they should be allowed to enjoy and have their investment in these vehicles, and that goes without saying. But those in the city that have concerns over safety and unintended consequences on their neighborhood streets, they should have their concerns equally weighed. I have a hard time believing that opening up all city streets will somehow result in an economic boom across the city. In fact, even if it did result in some economic gains, I've heard, just one more dollar. Well, if there's one incident that resulted in a fatality or severe injury, I'm not sure how much those gains would be worth it, especially if that injury was a bystander. The EPA sets the value of a human life at around ten million dollars. If one person, God forbid, dies in an accident of any type in the next thirty years that you have open routes, ATVs and UTVs would be having to bring in three hundred thousand dollars a year to make that payment worth it. And that payment doesn't include any of the intangible or external costs for the sadness and the grief that these accidents bring when they happen. And I know personally, I grew up in a town where accidents along Highway ten before it became four-line, they were commonplace. I had more friends and acquaintances die in these accidents than I care to remember and I watched many families never recover from them. I think if you pass this ordinance, the city and you are taking liability of your vote. And it's frankly when, not if, something tragic occurs, I will be the first person to email you to remind you about your vote. Thank you.
We also have Amy C. Booth Wilson who's asked to speak against this.
Good evening, council. Um, again, my name's Amy C. Booth Wilson, I live at five 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 Northwater Street. Like the others, I appreciate you taking the time tonight to hear us out. I'm passing around a handout. Um, a lot of the debate over ATV, UTVs spanning last year to present has been about the relative safety against other automobiles or motorized vehicles like motorcycles, cars, et cetera. So I wanted to put some graphs together. So if you look on first page, you can see data from U two thousand and five to present, shown in three different ways. So it says Wisconsin ATV, UTV fatalities per a hundred thousand registered users of ATV, UTVs in Wisconsin, uh, fatalities per year, and fatalities per a hundred million miles used. And for each of these graphs, the audience can't see it tonight, but for each of these graphs, you can see an increase between two thousand and five and two thousand and nineteen. There's ups and downs in the years in between, but overall, there's an increase. I just wanna point that out. And especially because that correlates with on-road use of ATVs. As the more we're using them, the more dangerous they're becoming. So just quick pause, data. This came from the Wisconsin DNR and I left the citations on there, so you can go look up those numbers if you want. So turn to the other side, and I thought this part was really great because it puts it into even better context. So at that same window of time from two thousand and five to present, cars are becoming safer in Wisconsin. You're seeing a dramatic decline in fatalities in cars. You know why? Because they're regulated and engineered and there's laws that make sure they're safer. The real issue here is that we're putting off-road vehicles onto roads and not regulating them the same way at all. They're monitored by the DNR, not the DOT. The cars are not passing safety regulations from the the F- the FTA, what's it called?
DOT?
No, the DOT, the federal DOT, yeah. The the people who oversee safety of cars and and make sure they're becoming safer and being engineered to be safer. So basically, humans are amazing. We're really good at looking out for the safety of each other, if we recognize that we need to be. And that's what this is about to me, is looking out for the safety of my neighborhood and my family. So the last point I want to make is the other piece of debate that I keep hearing is that this is just a general ATV issue, not a road issue. Well, a lot of people have been researching this, and the Consumer Federation of America, which watch out for watches out for consumer safety, has been documenting ATV fatalities and accidents for decades. And they come out with very strong language. They actually have a publication I pulled from that says, "ATVs on Rose Rays is a Safety Crisis." And they recommend that municipal governments do not legalize this, and they're watching it happen and telling people this is not a good idea. American Association of Pediatrics have come out and said this is not a good idea. It is not a good idea from all these different safety standpoints. So that final graph I want to show you, on the lower left-hand side, shows that in 2017, 52% of the nation's ATV/UTV fatalities occurred on roads, okay? Not on trails, on roads. So the majority are occurring on roads. And then, the data set from that organization also found that of the ones occurring on roads, 74% of the ATV fatalities are occurring on public roads, not private roads. So if you guys want to look at longitudinal data, I provided it, and I'm happy to look up any other numbers if you'd like. We can talk about the details of why this is happening, again, back to engineering, et cetera. There are smarter people than me that can probably discuss that. I know Christina Fields here is a transportation engineer by training, and she can certainly address these issues. But the final point I wanted to make is if something's not broke, why fix it? You guys have a designated route. We have a designated route that allows the ATVs to reach businesses, the majority of businesses in our community. Keep that. Don't bring these into our neighborhoods, or we're just going to make a problem. Thank you.
And I also have a request from Christina Fields to speak.
As most of you know, I'm the chair of the Community Safe Routes Committee, and for those of you who don't know, that means that that committee is a city committee, and we're tasked with planning for safe bike and pedestrian connections between people's homes and schools and parks and businesses. This past summer brought the installation of a sidewalk in my neighborhood. It was an important sidewalk connection between Westview Elementary and the middle school. It took 11 years. Some of you are part of that initial site visit and walk that we did with students through that neighborhood. It took 11 years. Our committee was directed to meet with the neighborhood by council and get 100% buy-in from the property owners, and then all the design standards for the sidewalk through the Sydney Ordinance, through standards, and through the Americans with Disabilities Act were followed in order for the sidewalk to get installed. A sidewalk, a piece of infrastructure one would expect in a residential neighborhood. About five years ago, we got a bike lane on Ridge Avenue. Council again required a public hearing, a public meeting with the neighborhood, 100% buy-in, a following of all the standards set out forth by the federal highways and the state DOT. A sidewalk, a bike lane, following all the standards, typical infrastructure we would see in a residential community, having to follow all the rules. So I'm confused. Why would ATV/UTV use in a residential neighborhood not be held to the same standard by council? Conveniently, city staff did not include this item on our last week's Community Safe Routes agenda. Prepared, the agenda was prepared by the city, so it wasn't discussed. I was not impressed. This is why I asked Jason to make the recommendation to move this decision into the future, because definitely our committee wants to provide some information to you and provide our recommendation against this. Many municipalities in Wisconsin have opened up their public roadways for ATV/UTV use. Platteville's been asked to join, and you, the common council, have been asked with approving or denying the proposed ordinance for this issue. Please do not allow ATV/UTV use in our neighborhood. I'm actually stunned and surprised to hear that there's consensus among city staff to do this, and I'll explain my reasons. First, I don't want them in my neighborhood. I enjoy a quiet residential neighborhood. The proposed ordinance allows ATV/UTV's noise levels up to 96 decibels. A vacuum cleaner? I was not sure. What's 96 decibels? I'll look it up. A vacuum cleaner, 70 decibels. A food blender, 88. A freight train, 15 meters, 15 meters away, 89. We're not at 96 yet. A freight train, 89. A diesel truck going 70 miles an hour at 50 feet away is 84. And I already have those in my neighborhood. They don't, I don't like that either. Sound increases logarithmic, logarithmically, not linearly. This means that ATV/UTV sound level of 96 decibels is four times louder than 70 decibels, which is four times louder than the vacuum cleaner, and I know no one can, standing next to you, can hear you talk when you're vacuuming. This noise would definitely impact my quality of like in my residential neighborhood, and I don't want it near me. Number two, the ordinance actually doesn't designate any routes, and I don't know why that is. So the draft ordinance has all of the routes crossed out, so that's just, I don't quite understand how that works. And so does that mean that we just wait, and when you vote, you're just providing the list of places you want to put the roads, the routes? It's unclear to me. Like, I would think that in a draft ordinance, it would have to be filled out, so that we know what we're discussing at the info session. So that's something I'm unclear about. Number three, I'd like to point out the, how ironic it is, item number I, letter I, that states ATV/UTVs are prohibited from operating on any recreational trails in the city. So it's okay for an off-road vehicle to operate on a paved roadway, but illegal to operate off-road. Surprising. Item M states that ATV/UTV operators should possess a valid operator's license as divided, defined by state statute. So I looked it up. Operator's license is not a driver's license. And I learned that 12-year-olds can be allowed to drive ATVs, UTVs on Platteville roads with a parent or guardian who's at least 18, if they have a valid safety certificate. So I looked up the valid safety certificate. There's nothing in the training about driving on paved roadways, nothing on how to determine who has the right of way, if a 12-year-old even knows what that means, no education on public roadway signs, public pavement markings, nothing on how to operate at a signalized intersection, how to drive in a school zone, how to drive near a pedestrian or bicyclist, there's no eye test. This is absurd. We do not want these uneducated drivers driving on our roadways. My daughter's 15. She has taken 30 hours of classroom instruction on driver's education, and 12 hours for behind the wheel from a professional instructor, and then will have to pass a driver's test and then have a temporary license. You know how the whole thing goes. Why would we allow a 12-year-old to drive on our public streets in our neighborhoods? Ask any parent who allows their kid to bike or walk to school. I see them every day. You don't want your 12-year-old, you don't want your kid walking or biking to school with a 12-year-old driving an ATV. It's ridiculous. I'm sure you're aware already, or you should be, that the roadways are not designed for ATV/UTV use. So yes, I'm a transportation engineer. I teach civil engineering, specifically roadway design. I brought you those manuals. Notice how thick they are. This is serious stuff. When designing a paved roadway, civil engineers must incorporate the design characteristics of the roadway, the vehicle using the roadway, and the human driving the vehicle. The Federal Highway Safety Act of 1966, for which we are still use, addressed the need to set safety standards for highways and vehicles due to the high number of fatalities that occurred in that era. This resulted in the federal and state governments conducting 70 years of research to come up with those manuals that I use in my class to teach my civil engineering students. They're filled with rationale, equations, and tables that are used to design roadways and in using these characteristics, and none of the research focused on ATV/UTV use on public roadways. This means that there are no ATV/UTV standards for sight distance, horizontal alignment, vertical alignment, and roadside design. I could go into the details, it'll take a lot longer. So has the city verified? That I'll just pick one small piece of that, which isn't a small deal. It's called stopping sight distance. Federal law mandates that stopping sight distance provided be provided for the design speed of the road everywhere on the roadway, everywhere. Has the city verified that the required stopping sight distance is available on all the roadways in Platteville from the perspective of a ATV/UTV driver? So I doubt it. Opening up our public paved streets would be done with disregard to the safe standards and practices set forth by our profession. I don't expect you to know that, because you're not civil engineers, right? You've been tasked to make a decision that you're not prepared to make. So with all due respect, you're a police officer, and what you do is enforce. You don't design roads. And all of you have great professions that you're super at with great skills. You're not civil engineers. You've been asked to make a decision that you're not prepared, you're not educated to make, and I'm bringing you these manuals, and I'm telling you as a professional, this is not an area you want to get into. I know you did try to seek advice. You brought the the DNR in, and I'm sure they talked about what Amy shared, the increase in fatalities. But again, they don't design roads either, right? So asking them on whether or not this is a good idea, they're not road designers. I appreciate you doing that. Crash data. The University of Iowa analyzed ATV crash data from 1985 to 2009 in the US. Over 60% of all fatalities resulted from roadway crashes. After 1998, roadway fatalities increased at over twice the rate of off-road fatalities due to this increase of seeing them on paved roadways. More than one in three involved a collision with another vehicle. I know what you're thinking. All the other municipalities are doing it. Why shouldn't we do it too? I'm telling you, you're not prepared to make this decision, because your background, you're not educated in this area. If and when, the statistics are showing, with an increase of ATVs on a paved roadway, we're seeing more fatalities. It's going to happen here, and it's going to be on your conscience, and I don't think you really want that. I mean, sit down and actually think of what that's going to feel like when that happens. You should already know that the vehicles themselves are not meant to drive on paved roadways. They're designed, the tires, the shape of the vehicle, everything. All the studies that are done and from the mechanical and electrical engineers who design those vehicles are completely done off-road. In the manuals themselves, they say, do not operate. In litigation, they say, your fault, ATV driver, you chose to go on the roadway. You have an opportunity to stop. So ethically, council, I think you should be obligated to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public. Staff has recommended the ordinance. They're not civil engineers. And neither are you. I think that through my experiences here with council, and I've worked with some of you for a really long time, you've been mentoring me. And now, I'd like to mentor you. You do not want this on your conscience. This is not an if going to happen. It's going to happen. And so I really am begging you, this is not a good idea to do what you're proposing. The roads have not been designed, the standards aren't there, the information isn't available. Don't put yourself in a position where you're not educated in this area. So, thanks.
That concludes the people who have registered to speak. For information for people in the audience, this was on our agenda October 22nd, and it has, this is the second time it's on our agenda in November. And also for people in the audience, we did seek input through several sources, the Chamber of Commerce. We also sought input through the Main Street Program and the people that are associated with it. We made contact with and had the school district here joining us at the work session we had last time. We also made contact with our local hospital and had people from the hospital responding to the questions, and we also made contact with the university. And I do note that today I received a note from the university. Many people in Platteville do not know it, but Longhorn Drive, which extends from Southwest Road to Greenwood Avenue, is not a city street, and the university has indicated that that portion would not be open to any ATV use. So I believe we've reached out. I believe this has also been in the paper. If you did not know of its existence, I'm sorry about that, but I know it's been on the radio, it's been on the TV, and it's been in the newspaper, and like I said, we did reach out. As to the drafting of the ordinance itself, you know that we had an ordinance that was in effect last year, and that that ordinance expired on the 14th. At our work session two weeks ago, which lasted quite a long time, and we did seek to have, since these vehicles really fall under the Department of Natural Resources instead of the Department of Transportation, we had the person who's in charge regionally, and for the life of me, I can't remember his name.
Marty Stone.
I would have said Kelly, so, sorry about that. Marty joined us for that and did provide input relative to many aspects of this. The consensus of the council after the work session was that in the preview, that we should have an ordinance, that we should have an ordinance. That was the first consensus of the council. The second consensus that was reached was the previous ordinance had a time from, of operation from sunrise to sunset. There was belief that that was hard to interpret. So us and our DNR person shared that across the region, people set times anywhere from, well, anywhere from no operation from 1:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m. to hours of operation like we are proposed, that have been included in this ordinance, which is 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So it's a set time. There was also consensus that in the original ordinance, the, there was a limitation on when ATVs could be on routes within the city, and it coincided with winter versus summer parking. So when winter parking rules went in effect, that meant there could be no ATVs on the roads, and then when summer, when that was out in April, that would allow ATVs. There was also consensus among the council that really, it's no reason for winter versus summer. There was not consensus about routes, and that's why in the draft, there is no route information. Each council member was asked to submit a map of routes that they believed would be. Okay? And that that was, that is our discussion item for tonight. And as, as was obvious in the presentation, in the staff presentation, there are, it's really not possible to open all routes. Unfortunately, the man from the DNR, Mr. Marty, Marty, said that you- Unfortunately, the man from the DNR, Mr. Marty, Marty said that you. You either sign all routes. Or you, well, you repeat what the, the, the DNR law is.
Have the designated routes and you sign those. Or you have open all the city streets with the exclusion of some and you note those as being closed.
And you sign.
With signage.
So either way, I mean, you're. Either way requires some type of signage. So I guess now, having given that background as to how we got to where we are tonight, and if anybody wants to add anything that I've forgotten.
I think one significant thing we learned in that meeting was that you couldn't have a directly from your home.
You couldn't have an exclusion that you basically say, take the most direct route to, from your home to.
So.
Designated routes.
So there is a community in southwest Wisconsin who has a law that's really not.
I don't know if it's law or just.
Their rules.
Their. Enforcement stance on it.
Right, there is that if there are designated routes within the city. And if you don't happen to live on that route, it's okay for you to drive from your home to, in the shortest path possible to the designated route. I don't know who monitors that, I don't know how that's monitored, but that was, that's at least one community in southwest Wisconsin. So now I guess I would open discussion on, at the council level to where you want to go with this ordinance. And what you want to include versus what you don't want to include.
I do want to ask, I mean no disrespect in reiterating this, but the Safe Routes Agenda, how was it decided that they did not address this issue this year?
The Safe Routes Agenda is, if I'm not mistaken, was previously drafted by Catherine Westerby, is that correct?
Well.
And, and we're in transition right now in, in, in that position. I think that in the absence of the Plana Community Development Specialist who was responsible for that, it would fall under Howard. And I just think it was an oversight that it wasn't included on that agenda.
An oversight.
Just easy, which can be, since we've been discussing it for a month and a half, it's sometimes old news to the people who have been discussing it so long. Ben is like, we've been discussing this how long? I'm getting tired of this discussion. So.
Well, to the same effect, when we wrote the ordinance and acted it last year, we knew when it was sunsetting. So Safe Routes Committee or anyone in the community could have kept the conversation.
There was an automatic. A part of that ordinance that said it would sunset at such a time and that the council would then move forward with discussion. So that was part of the ordinance last year. So council, where do we stand now on this ordinance? Or crafting this ordinance, I guess?
I guess it means I was only one of two people that submitted maps. I'll start. So I would like to see all the city streets except for east, or excuse me, Business One Fifty-One, east of Eastside Road. Again, and then also Highway Eighty-One, south of Water Street due to the fact of higher speed limits. I understand, as Ken said, there's more businesses out there, but you also do some, taking into consideration the safety versus the speed and the amount of traffic.
Can you repeat that again?
Alright, I would like to see Business One Fifty-One, east of Eastside Road, closed or not included. And then also Highway Eighty-One, south of Business One Fifty-One, not included. So the two that I had on the, the map that I'd submitted.
Okay, so you would allow, so then there would be ATVs on routes that are forty-five miles an hour?
I'm sorry, I meant to say thirty-five and under.
So thirty-five and under would be really Valley Road. Thirty, the forty-five mile an hour speed limit starts about in front of Farity, Farity or whatever.
It, it starts, it starts shortly after you cross the, the bridge there by Napa Fast and All.
Yeah, Valley Road, just past.
Just past Valley Road. That's where the speed limit changes.
Right, that's where the speed limit changes. So that would be from, yeah. And, and the other one you said was just Eighty-One South.
Business One Fifty-One.
Of Business One Fifty-One. And Ken, you submitted and, and, and you submitted an actual map. So what are your, what is your thought on this?
My thought was simply to have designated routes. I did not want to have ATVs, UTVs on residential streets whatsoever. I favored, in my second page, I favored what Monroe has. And Monroe, that was brought up here, they, they favored. Using the most direct route to a designated street. From the residence of, of the owner or operator of ATV, UTV. So I do not favor all streets being open, or just the owner or operator getting to a designated route. I said before, I did not favor going by schools, even though we have B. I get that mixed up. We have, yeah, that's B, B going by Neil Wilkins. I asked questions about going more. Out of the city on Lancaster Street and also here Mineral, Mineral Street. And going on to Eastside Road. But since those are not allowable because of speed limit, that would decrease the size with the length of the streets that I have designated. So again, I do not favor going to the use of all streets, just designated to get through the city.
And so, your addition would be, would you, your addition would be Lancaster Road?
Well, they could, they'd have to stop at the, at the, at the city.
At, at the city limits unless the, unless there was permission granted.
So where, where are they going to turn around?
Unless there was permission granted on the north side of town.
Something is granted on that. So that's the issue here, even with the going out, Business One Fifty-One issue is the speed.
Basically, that would be your addition, because right now, the route that had been approved for, with the previous ordinance was basically County B through town. That would mean in from the west and then up to the museum and out toward the mound. And the other part of the route that had been approved was a turn at the bottom of Main Street. Down to the four-way light or down to the Walgreens corner. And then a turn out toward Dubuque on Business Highway One Fifty-One and up. I believe those were the routes.
That's right.
And so you're saying those routes and your addition was just the route to the north coming in on the highway to.
If it could be down with Lancaster, if it could be down to Water Street.
And then you also wanted Water Street out to the golf course?
Yes, it's gone up here. But it would have to stop at, what is North Side Road up there? I think it's, it's not listed here.
North Side Drive.
North Side Drive.
Okay. Eileen?
My initial reaction was to allow ATVs, UTVs on. Streets excluding from. Eastside Road, or Valley Road, excuse me, out toward the east side of Plattville. I think that that area is too busy and the speed limit is higher. So the, the businesses that are out there would. I would consider some restrictions around the schools. I was concerned about that. But I would not also do it. As I got to thinking about this. It gets very cumbersome to say that you can travel on this road and you can't travel on that road. The, the question is whether or not to allow them in the city. If you allow them in the city, and that is one thing that I'm leaning toward. Then I think that to say that we have to sign every road where the, where ATV, UTV can be used is possible. I'm not sure that I see the value of that in the long run. And I know people don't like the argument that motorcycles have been allowed on our city streets. I know they're a different vehicle than an ATV, UTV. Bicycles go on all our streets, they're not cars. They're dangerous in my view as well. ATVs, UTVs are similar. So I do have some concerns about going by the school, but after having the Superintendent of Schools indicate that he would not. Say that would not be acceptable. I think it's probably worth trying to have the city open to ATVs, UTVs. Where the speed limit is thirty-five miles an hour under. And, and I think the fact that it is thirty-five miles or under will lessen the opportunity, the chance, the possibility of accidents. I think the accidents that are cited have most often occurred in the country, not in the city. We talked to other communities in the area and initially some of them did the same thing we did, which was to say certain routes and no place else. And after a year, they said the city might as well just open up because it's not been an issue. And in some ways, it's less. Less of a disruption for the community, because otherwise you're always looking and saying that ATV should not be on that street. So, has it been a problem? It's been a problem wherever we said, you can't have an ATV, UTV. Is that a good reason for changing it? No, but it should be considered, I think, because I think what it showed is we tried it for a year. And we did not have the problems that we thought we would have. Will we have more problems? Possibly, in which case I think we review it again. So I, long, long answer, open all the streets. I would go along with Ken if the rest of the council also wanted to do that and say that we would look more seriously at the school areas and say maybe not in those areas.
Robin?
Oh. I don't know. I, I am kind of passionate in a way that I'm afraid to let myself speak right now, I guess. So I say that I would like everyone to understand that we do take this matter very seriously. And have spent quite a bit of time researching and reading things that have been published by professionals. I do think that it's a shame that we haven't utilized our professionals locally as much as we probably should be on this topic. I guess, I really feel like there has to be some amount of emphasis on autonomy and choice to recreate and enjoy your community as you choose. While we still have to respect one another. And like mentioned, bicycles do add dynamics to traffic that are difficult to deal with at times, but very, we've got regulation stipulations. And efforts to help that along, which I understand ATV, UTV is just way behind the curve on that. They need, the industry needs to step up and regulate their vehicles, make them safer, knowing that they are selling to a market that's driving on roads. Even though they're giving themselves the out. But I do feel a bit. Defensive on this idea that it's on our conscience, because that's living. Like the people who get on the ATV make their choices, the parents who allow a kid to have, I'm, I'm going to get into deep. Item I say arguable, I don't want to do that, but you know, a kid could get hit by a bike. Are we responsible as a city for the fact that that child got hit by a bike? It's on our conscience. It, a kid frowned at the swimming pool, should we fill the swimming pool? That could and would be on our conscience. So I absolutely agree that it would be devastating to have a death on an ATV, UTV. I, I have teenage boys that are going to be tempted to ride ATVs through town. So I take it very seriously and it's not an easy decision. But thank you for your thoughts on this. So, as far as the streets. So this is the piece, because not only am I not standing up against ATV, UTV routes when I understand the argument to stand up against them. I am inclined to open them up to all of the streets, because I feel that it is more a matter of simple neighborhood convenience. Not that it's going to be a great increase of rowdiness and traffic through the neighborhoods. I would make some exceptions perhaps around the university or if there was certain housing. So, we have the option to do that going forward. If we see problem areas or problems identified, we can address it at any point. Granted, injuries you can't undo. But. I'm leaning towards more than less, and I know that's not popular right now.
Jason?
So I just want to stick with one of the main arguments that I've had, not just with our ordinance and looking at our ordinance, but just in the consideration of ATV ordinances in general. And the huge piece that I feel has been missing in, you know, in all of these discussions is that. We're looking at giving extra privilege to a certain vehicle type. That is not held to the same standards as other motor vehicles on the road. One example that, you know, I, I turn to to kind of make a comparison is that outside of motor vehicles such as a truck, car. You know, your typical motor vehicle, motorcycles are kind of an alternative mode of transportation. Motorcycles, in order to ride them on the road, you need to have a motorcycle endorsement on your license. In order to get that endorsement, you have to go through a motorcycle specific safety training course. And/or take a specific motorcycle driving test to prove that you know how to operate that machine on the road. Because they are also. Registered with the DOT, motorcycles also have to follow the same laws. They're held to the same regulations, fees, all of that. So if I take my motorcycle out for a ride and hypothetically I get pulled over for an OWI on my motorcycle. That is not going to be good, because that not only goes against my license, but I, you know. Are, am subject to all of the penalties that go along with OWI for any other vehicle. So that's the part of it that I've struggled, and I've struggled more so because the other part of it is that I also enjoy recreational vehicles. My brothers and I grew up on, you know, motorcycles primarily has been our preference in terms of off-road vehicles, but we've had four-wheelers and that. So. I want to make sure that I'm. The other thing is too, is that with ATVs, because they're not registered, because they're not held to the same standards as other vehicles registered with the DOT. They don't have the same CC standards. So again, we're looking at vehicles that haven't passed standards to be driven on the road. Going back to motorcycles, if you have a dual-sport motorcycle, which you can ride both on and off-road, there's certain things that, certain requirements that you need to have. Specifically the tires. So if you want to, you know, ride both off-road, on-road, there's certain dual-sport tires that meet those requirements of being able to be used both off-road and on-road. Again. Being. And I feel like, why are we, why are we holding? A class of vehicles that is similar to that to different standards? And I guess that's where, where I struggle a lot with this. But again. I can also see the other side. So. The other thing that I want to, to address is that one of the main arguments that's been being used to advocate for. The other thing that I want to, to address is that one of the main arguments that's been being used to advocate for um the ATV routes is that it's going to. Per, it's going to increase tourism, it's going to increase business revenue. I was one that asked for, for those numbers from both businesses and the tourism, the Chamber of Commerce. What I got back from the businesses that did respond is that they saw little to no difference in terms of revenue. I did not receive any response from the Chamber of Commerce in terms of looking at how many unique users did this bring in to the city? How many, you know, how much tourism, you know, extratourism was generated when this ordinance was put into place? Excuse me. So, I guess I struggle with that as well because I don't have hard data to, to support that main argument. Um. The other thing that I want the public to know is that as part of this ordinance, and again, depending on if routes are approved or not. One of the things that we've included in this ordinance is that the city at any point, um if there are concerns brought forth by the public. You know, in terms of the routes, you know, safety, safety concerns, anything else. We can convene and decide what we can do in terms of, do we need to shut down the route, do we need, what, what can we do? So, you know, again, going back to safety, I hear that, you know, from, from a lot of people that that's a, a really big concern. So we have that in place, not that that necessarily makes it better or not, but um. So. Again, sticking to what I said before, I'm having trouble supporting. I'm having trouble supporting this, but then the other side of it is, you know, we do have the trial ordinance that we've already done, there's already routes in place. As I look at Ken Killian's map, it looks similar to what the current routes are. And with the addition of some of the other routes, which I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, do provide connectivity access to the town routes. Which is something that the ATV, UTV club um had mentioned. Would be important is to have connectivity in terms of, of routes between Platteville, the city and, and the town. Um. Ken Killian's routes also avoid a lot of residential areas, but it also, again, most of them are going to hit the majority of businesses in Platteville. In terms of if we're going to continue to look at that as a supporting factor for this. So, kind of in closing in my thoughts, one of the things, again, because I've been an avid user of recreational vehicles, this is really something, you know, that, that is. Affects me personally and, and reflects on, on the sport in general, I feel like because the, the safety concerns, because of the um. You know, not addressing the, the whole thing of, you know, not ATV, UTVs not being held to the same standards, safety standards and also traffic standards and that. I feel like missing that has been almost like a disservice to the sport and regardless of what happens, you know, in terms of approving routes. I have high expectations of specifically the ATV, UTV club to make sure that in some way they can use their, their club, the, the lobbying power, the resources that they have. To address this issue, cuz I feel like, you know, especially with safety, I feel like it's a, and it's important issue to, to address. And also, in terms of, again, the image of the sport, anything that we can do to make sure that we're being as safe as possible, we're taking the right actions, I think. Is extremely important, and so, again, I have high expectations of the club to address some of that, whether or not they do that, that's on them. Um, so, and, and the other thing is too, again, going back to the main points, um or the main arguing point or supporting point is that it's going to increase revenue, it's going to increase tourism. I, from, from this point out, regardless of what gets approved, I wanna see numbers, I want to see something, some evidence to back up this argument. To make a case as to why we're making exceptions for these vehicles to be on the roads. Um, how that's done, I'm not sure, you know, maybe the, the, the club works with city, works with chamber, whatever, to provide that data. But I feel very strongly that I'd like to see that data tracked, especially since after this past year, we really didn't get anything in terms of that area. Um, as of right now, going back to the routes, like I said, I'm in favor, I'm looking at the, the routes that Ken Killian has um proposed. And again, it includes the already existing routes as well as adding some other main routes. Hopefully that will provide connectivity for ATVs to get through Platteville and connected to other existing routes.
Thank you, Barb?
Well, I've mentioned this before, that I think we should open our town. Uh, I have a number of reasons. One thing, and I, most of us know that Don Francis, an extensive set of data when he was on the council. And, which I still have copies of, that uh reflect on his feelings, so I will go back and review all that data. I also have a issue that is just on my mind and that's the minibike. I have three of those in my neighborhood and they do not stick to the speed limit and they do not wear helmets and they basically don't care. So, I'm like you, comparing one vehicle to another. I think, I went to Cassville today for a meeting. Well, one of the businesses had three ATVs sitting in their parking lot because these people are workers and. They're, the company chose to allow them to park in their parking lot and work at that business. There, they drove from, I really don't know. But, that is out in the county, it is out in Platteville School, I should ask, uh, a different township. Uh, is a smaller community, I don't know what they'd say if they couldn't go along the river and use that vehicle to get from one end of Grant County to the other. The RE hub of Grant County and Lafayette County and I feel we should open up our area for that very reason. People need to get through town, they need to get through town. And I do agree with some of this material about that speed limit on Business 151 from Highway eighty, eighty-one intersection all the way to East Town Road. Or even all the way to Walmart for that matter, because it is forty miles an hour and that. Until that road gets redone, could be an issue. But, that's how I feel, I think we really need to look at our town as an open environment.
Guess I'm the only one that hasn't spoken. I may be the only one that also lives on a route on the council, cuz I do live on a route, I made the original uh motion last year. As to noise, I mean, one of the complaints last year was that, or one of the criticisms last year dealt with noise and I don't know if it should be ninety-six decibels or sixty-nine decibels, but I can tell you. From my experience living on the route, that the ATVs were not the loudest vehicles that passed by my house. There are cars that make a whole lot more noise than the ATVs, so from a noise standpoint, uh, you know, and I'm willing to look at the ninety-six decibels, I don't actually know where that came from. I, I have no clue if that came from other eight.
State statute.
It's state statute.
Yep.
So that came from state statute, interesting, okay. So then, uh, that was a, that was a concern I had before, another concern I had last year was a speed, would there be excessive speed? And um, I didn't witness that, in fact, if anything on the route that I live on, and I live on West Main Street. I saw in many cases that ATVs actually slowed the traffic because I live on a very fast twenty-five mile an hour road. I think probably many policemen would agree that my road is rarely twenty-five miles an hour, it's probably more like thirty-five or forty most of the time. And um, one of the provisions that was in the ordinance last year, which I still believe is a good idea. Was a provision that said if there are, I believe it was eight or more uh vehicles coming through at the same time. That they needed to register with the police department and get some type of permit. I still think that's a good idea, I know there are people on the council that disagree with that, but I think that's a good idea from a safety standpoint. I think it's a good idea from our police standpoint, because if there are thirty ATVs going through town, um, you know, there might be a need for extra, extra help at intersections, just that whole thing. And would I like it to apply to fifty motorcycles that go through town? Yes, would I like it to apply to fifty of anything that go through town? Yes, but we don't have that ability. Um. The, Mr. Marty from DNR was very confusing to us, I believe, last week when we talked about, could we have preferred routes through town? I mean, I, I believe one of the thing, I, I believe, I believe the routes that we had were good routes. And I believe that there is an opportunity to have a couple of additional routes, whether it be Lancaster Road and then going out Chestnut Street. Whether it be Water Street going up, I can see a couple of additional routes. I think the thing that we struggled with was how, how do you, and, and you're right, this is not a tourism initiative. For anybody saying that this is a tourism initiative, I believe that's just not even, there, there is no evidence to suggest that. So, my understanding is that there are people in town who have these vehicles, who don't live on the routes and their complaint is then. That they have to trailer their vehicle in order to get it to an approved route. And we thought we may have addressed that with the shortest distance thing, but according to Marty, you can't do that. So that put us in a position where people are like, well then maybe we just ought to open all the streets. Personally, I believe we have some very narrow streets that don't need to be opened. I think that there's enough congestion on, on North Fourth, North Second, several other of our very tiny streets that we don't need to have this additional congestion. So I do favor extending the ordinance, but I guess at this point in time, I would like to stick with approved routes. And, and extend those to some other areas. Where do we go?
Just on one point, when you say that there's certain streets that you don't think should be allowed, we could sign that those particular streets are not open. But I'm not pushing in that direction, I'm not, but I do think it could be addressed.
Well, that's, it's possible, I don't know how many, how much, how many signs you can put on roads that.
We're at a point where if we decide to keep putting up more signs, then we've got a lot of signs that we're not necessarily want to undo all of that. But if we just put on the edge of the city, all streets open.
Now I encourage you to talk into the mic, please.
Yeah, you have to.
I'm so sorry. Cuz we missed like half of what you said, sorry.
To reiterate, if we were to open up all streets, I believe we can legally sign off certain streets, at least if we felt that we wouldn't want congestion on certain streets. I'm just trying to clarify, not necessarily.
Saying yes, that's true. Um, is there consensus to open all streets?
See, yes.
No.
No.
To no consensus. I don't think there's consensus to do that. Uh, we have at least three, cuz I've already said, so three, well, I guess, so consensus would be the major, I could, you know. Um, Isaac, did you submit this if, this map, if limited routes?
Yeah, if we went to, I did that the same time I did the other map as well.
Right, so we have, uh, we have, uh, um, Ken's map, which is white, approved ATV, UTV routes, Ken Killian. And we have if limited routes that came from Isaac, and so Isaac, would you like to talk about your if limited routes?
So if we did the if limited routes, there'd be basically two additional routes, so it'd be from, um, well, let's say Lancaster Street coming in from Old Lancaster Road. Following Lancaster Street to Adams Street to North Chestnut Street to South Chestnut Street. And then to connect up with the existing route at um Business 151 or Dubuque Road. And then the second portion, which would connect the east, the northeast side of town to the northwest side of this town would be from Madison Street to North Water, Pitt Street, Sylvia and Ridge Avenue. Then you would connect another gas station as well on the northeast side of town. Um, you'd be roughly close to another one, but on, on the northwest, but just a tad off the route. Um, again, we could do that one with the, and the reason that the township has not gotten there for that little section above Ridge Avenue is the DOT would not submit that or approve that until you get. A connectivity route to go with it, so that's when that would take place, and we've already gotten one of them on the south side of.
On County D, you got that on.
Correct, yep.
Yeah, I know that, I think that was required last.
Because it went from city, town, county, state, actually, kind of a four-way deal there.
And so the differences I see in these two maps.
Basically be from Madison Street, Pitt Street and Ridge Avenue.
That would be one difference and then Ken included Water Street from the intersection out.
That would be a dead end though, so.
Yeah, that would be a dead end, right, and the other thing that he included was the piece that goes from um. The Walgreens, for lack of a better way, to Valley Road, which then, and then he included Valley Road.
Could be another dead end as well.
Uh, yeah, you would have to then include Mineral Street back to Broadway.
He did, right.
Yeah, which he did, he included Mineral Street back to Broadway and Mineral Street the other way. Uh, I, I will say that I have some concern about Ridge Avenue. And if there were a better street than Ridge Avenue, it would be my suggestion that, I believe Ridge Avenue is where we have the bicycle lane right now and a walking path. And I, I, I just have some concern about adding yet ATVs on with a walking path and a bicycle path.
Did a survey last year, over sixty percent of that street wasn't favorable.
You did a survey last year?
We did, we walked door to door, I think that's some cheers, from Lancaster, or excuse me, from North Water Street to um Lancaster Street.
Walked that path.
Different, two different days.
And over sixty percent of the people were in favor?
On Ridge Avenue, if you got to Pitt Street, it was ninety-five percent. And then Sylvia, which is only four houses.
I was gonna say there aren't many houses there.
Yep.
So, um, perhaps we could talk about how y'all feel about the uh if limited routes map submitted by Isaac with an addition of um. For, from Ken's map with an addition that goes from uh to Valley Road and then back on East Mineral to Broadway. We have any support for that?
Combination of the two limited routes, sure.
I'll agree.
I'll agree.
I have concerns about Ridge Avenue as well, with that being more in a primarily residential area.
So the south side of that would be Camp Street, is that right? I mean, the other, the other route that comes, I mean, you could come across by, to the park and then go south on, on North Fourth to Camp and go across, instead of Ridge.
So with the, with Isaac's limited routes, the one that cuts across on the, on the north side, that includes Ridge Avenue, right?
The, the longest, so if you, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the longest of that line is Ridge Avenue. So it goes from, going from west to east, that would be Ridge, all the way to North Fourth, south on North Fourth by the Smith Park, by the swimming pool. And then south to Pitt.
So my concerns about that then would be the other roads that are highlighted there do go by, especially in the summer, a lot of kids going to the pool, a lot of families, a lot of pedestrian traffic there. So that would be my concern, and also the route that goes past Legion Park.
Your safety concern would be the children there?
Especially in the summer, there's a lot of traffic that goes to Smith Park as well as the pool, and there's already a lot of vehicle traffic that goes through there as well during those times.
Contacted communities that have, that go to their pool on their park, and they've not had one issue. The one community also stated that it was a great way of people actually using their parks when they're getting their picnics. And they saw that was used quite often.
Is there any other reason why there's that connecting route?
Connectivity, so that you don't come through the downtown, Broadway Street, a busy area. And you also include another gas station, actually the only gas station northeast side of town.
I would, I'm like Isaac, I live a block from Pitt Street. It's the only way to get from eighty to eighty-one without doing downtown. You have the university, you have a gravel pit, you have, I don't know how else you're gonna go the north end from eighty to eighty-one without going through those streets that we talked about, which is Pitt Street, Second Street, Sylvia, I missed Second Street, and then Ridge. It's the route we use. It's the route that everybody in town uses that's on the north side of town. And I don't know where you're gonna put this traffic, anyway, any traffic, without using those routes.
So going back to the argument that we're trying to increase business traffic, wouldn't having the routes go through Main Street as much as possible, kind of work towards that goal? Whereas that's mostly the concentration of businesses that we're talking about?
Including another business that's been here as long as I can remember on the corners of Madison and North Water Street. Around a gas station that's not utilized, or if you went to the northwest side down, another gas station that was just sold, same owner owned it for thirty-four years, that wasn't able to be included.
So.
How much, oh, sorry.
I don't think that there's a issue with the, I don't hear Jason talking about the north, the northwest entrance and coming by that gas station. I guess you're talking about what used to be called the Easy Shop?
BP Station.
Or whatever it's called now. And that's at the corner of Wa, of Water and, by the high school.
Which would be on a route that is proposed on Ken Killian's map?
On Ken Killian, yes, it'd be on a route proposed by Ken Killian's map if you cut off the north side and then just went, are you, are you proposing Water Street out to the, to the traffic circle?
Yeah, I am, like I said, I am looking at Ken Killian's map and having Water Street would include, it goes past Madison, so it would include that BP gas station on that side of town.
Right, but there is no, there is no connectivity north of, of Madison Street.
Okay.
So I don't think there's a plan, is there not a plan to put, make ATV routes in Brown Deer?
They would, that is township. They would come across Walnut Dell.
Pardon?
It would come across on Walnut Dell Road.
And not on Golf View?
No, as far as I'm aware of, Chad.
Because that's, that's where North Water would take you normally to, within feet of Golf View Drive on the north side of the golf course. So really, then, you don't wanna.
But the speed would be above, would be a forty miles an hour over as well, it changes.
Yeah, I don't know where it changes.
Well before that.
So it would appear then that Ken's North Water Street would need to stop at the traffic circle?
Yes. And while we're trying to be as inclusive as possible, I feel like unfortunately, some businesses will be leave, or left out because of the limited ATV routes, so I guess that's.
But that would get the two gas stations on.
Right, right.
I guess I feel like, yes, for businesses, we get them to Main Street, but if we have people going through our community, where do we want them? If we would like them to consider moving to our community, putting them past the pool, the ball field, Smith Park, I think is a huge advertising for our community. I also think that there's going to be quite a few people that would enjoy just coming into the ball fields or festivities that happen at the event center, that, that community space. So I, I see Ridge Avenue as a residential area. I think the bike lanes there help traffic between ATVs and bicycles to be more clearly understood and a safer situation for bikes. I think it's a logical thoroughfare there, just like we're talking about Water Street, which has residents up and down it, and Broadway Street, which has residents up and down it. If it's the only way to get across the north side of town, everybody's doing it in their cars, ATVs, UTVs are looking around them when they're driving. They're enjoying the kids at the park and the pool. I don't see them as being especially higher risk for kids than any of the cars driving down that road. I understand they can't stop as fast. I will recognize that.
Chief, can you tell us your patrol methodology in the summer as it relates to the parks and up in that direction? I mean, I know that the swimming pool is signed at fifteen miles an hour.
That was what I was gonna reference, is that on Pitt and Sylvia, fifteen miles per hour between Memorial Day and.
But can you tell us how well that is abided by, and also the number of times that you're there to remind people?
A lot of reminding with speed boards. We do run a lot of traffic in that area. And I'd say that on Pitt Street, and Luke can back this up, on nights that there are ball games or soccer, heavy traffic, a lot of pedestrian traffic, heavy, a lot of vehicles parked on both sides of the road. I'm ducking your question or not, I'm?
No, I have concerns about, I mean, I understand that it's a two-sided question, but I also understand that it, you know, I have the same problem right now with the buses that are parking by the university and these blinking signs. They park by the blinking sign, and then you can't see if there's somebody coming out from behind that bus or not. Because the sign is blinking, and frankly, the bus is turning on the blinking sign at this point in time.
I found that out.
So the bus turns on the sign, so now you're creeping along, and pretty soon it's gonna be like the, the, the little boy who stuck his finger in the dam. You're not gonna pay attention because it, somebody will have cried wolf once too often. But I do have concerns about little, particularly little kids after paying, playing soccer, running between cars and out into the road. But I've got that concern, no matter what the vehicle is. All right, folks, we've been at this now for forty-five minutes. So are we prepared to include the limited routes in the ordinance? Do we have consensus to include the limited routes?
I'd be in favor of the, the first map that I proposed, the all routes, but if we were to do a limited route, I would like to see the limited routes map that I added or sent in with the addition of the portion that Ken put in from Dubuque Road, Valley Road, then back west on Mineral Street.
I want to confirm that. Did you want to say more, Isaac? I'm sorry.
No, that's it, that's the only, because the other ones that he has on there are dead end, would be dead end routes, and would cause more problems.
And I believe at this point in time, to reinforce our campground, we should include Mitchell Roll, Road to the entrance of the campground. If that, if the Parks and Recreation Department are prepared to handle ATV traffic and UTV traffic in the park, because that would be, there are all kinds of paths and other things that will be incredibly tempting. More than tempting, I would say.
I mean, in terms of enforcement, we would rely on the, the police department to enforce it just like they would on city streets or any other private residence.
In terms of signage?
In terms of signage, we would have, you know, no ATVs allowed on the trails.
How about the rest of the grass?
It, it's, at what point do you want to have signage versus just common sense? I mean, I think we could put up twenty signs and, you know, I don't know how, how effective that's going to be at a certain point. ATVs are not allowed on, within our parks, except for, you know, in parking lots.
So you'll, I mean, there'll be a some.
Personally, I'm rather, I'm rather anti-sign, so I, I would rather keep it to a minimum and rely on our ordinances to enforce that, and our PD presence to enforce that. I, I think you'd have to have something that says, you know, no ATVs allowed on these trails, but there's only one trail that connects directly there, so I, I wouldn't anticipate, i- if ATVs were allowed up until that point, I wouldn't anticipate, you know, having a wall of signs that say, no ATVs.
No, but I, I, I believe the whole issue of ATVs in parks can, will get to be an issue. And so I think there has to be some tie, I mean, frankly, I have an ATV. And I know people who ride my ATV. And I know that the term common sense doesn't necessarily resonate with them.
We will sign it enough to gain compliance.
And, and we'll have the need to pass an ordinance ultimately for the recreation trails, for prohibiting motor vehicles. Right now, the grants that we accessed, I think I'm correct in saying this, Howard, the grants that we got through DNR do not allow for motorized travel on any of the routes.
I understand that, and I, I thought we already had this ordinance.
Is that already in the ordinance? Yeah.
A number are signed already. I, I know.
If it's not in an ordinance, then one would expect that ordinance to be on our desk in January.
It gets complicated, because then do you allow personal mobility devices? Yeah, I mean, a lot of.
I'm sure that there are other communities that have these same questions that we, that have been vetted and answered, that there would be some models to look at.
Wasn't that included in the original ordinance, though, that they couldn't operate on any of the recreation?
This ordinance for ATVs, yes, it was included in the ordinance that they could not, that an ATV.
On any recreation trail?
On a recreation trail.
Yeah.
Right, that was included in our original ordinance.
Okay.
And we're, we're, we're proposing complete, keeping that language. So the, the three main items we were looking at were time, time of year, time of day, and routes. All right, so we're back to routes. We know time at six to ten, we've talked about that. Time of day, year round. So now, limited routes. We have a proposal that's come forward now to include the limited route map submitted by Isaac with the addition of the space that goes from, or the road that goes east from Walgreens to Valley Road, then Valley Road to East Mineral Street, and then East Mineral Street back to Broadway. So there would be the limited routes, and we would also include that portion of Mitchell Hollow Road, and I don't even know how far we own Mitchell Hollow Road.
We own it to the edge of the park, which is a little, a little bit east of that bridge in the low spot down there.
And Mitchell Hollow Road isn't signed, is that correct, from, that would be a county, well, that'd be a township, it'd be, it's not. Okay, so it would just be, then it would be just the entrance, just so that people get, could get out of the park. I mean, if we're saying they can't go on the grass, then they need to be, if they park their ATVs and camp in our camping park, then they need to be able to get to the road, right? How do they get to the?
There is a drive into the park.
From Mitchell Hollow Road?
From Mitchell Hollow Road into the park that would lead to all of the campsites.
Campsites. So that, that would need to be signed, so that they could travel on that piece of road?
Sure, I mean, I don't know if you want to consider it a road, I, I consider it the start of the parking lot, but.
No, but I mean Mitchell Hollow Road is a, is a road, yeah.
Yes, I thought you were referring to the roadway into the park.
No, I'm not, I'm not, not the park entrance. Okay, do you want this written up for? Want these routes written up for next, for consideration at the next meeting?
Yes.
December, okay.
Well, I think it's fair to go past safe routes. So I would ask if it.
No, we have to have, this is, this is, but they need something to look at.
Sure, okay, but as far as it being on our agenda for a vote next meeting.
I didn't say a vote.
Yeah, I'm sorry, when you.
I said, this should be drafted for the next meeting. It could be moved to action, and it could be taken. On the other hand, safe routes could meet before then. Do you have, do you have this if limited routes map?
Yes, so I believe that staff have an understanding of the routes that the council is requesting to be in a draft ordinance, and that draft ordinance will be considered by the council, and the council's consensus is to consider that draft ordinance, to have that on the agenda for the next meeting.
We want to see the ordinance at the next meeting.
Yes.
So, we will, I don't, you want that on the action for the next meeting?
Yep.
Action for the next meeting?
No, I do not.
Action?
I do not.
No.
I'm not here on the town, so. More discussion needed.
Okay, we'll bring it back for discussion at the next meeting.
Doesn't mean I think we go into January to make any decision.
That's right, because we have only one meeting in December. Is that okay with people?
May I ask a clarifying question?
Okay, so, just a minute. We will put it on for action at the next meeting, and if it is, if somebody decides to table it, then it would be tabled for action in the January meeting. Does that seem reasonable?
I don't know, given that two of us have already expressed that we aren't going to be able to be at that meeting. I don't know, given that two of us have already expressed that we aren't going to be able to be at that meeting, um.
Oh, you're not, oh, oh, now two.
Be able to vote on it.
Two are not going to be at the meeting.
The town?
In December. You're not gonna be there, Barb?
No, not the town.
Well, that's the only meeting we have in December.
Right.
And you're not gonna be there.
Right.
Okay, we'll take it.
So, information and discussion at December tenth.
Yeah, we have, we all have to hope we have enough people, even have a meeting.
Yeah, throw the, the new city manager in for this.
Okay, let's move on to the next uh information and discussion item. We have one more. Budget amendment, transfer of city manager contingency funds.
Right, um, before, just one moment.
Is this yours?
No, that one's yours, I think.
Do you have a copy?
Oh, no, that one's mine.
Get clarified?
No.
Oh, Candace still has a clarifying question.
Candace, what's your clarifying question?
I just wanted to be clear what this consensus is. There was a couple different things said and I'm not clear in my notes what the consensus was.
The consensus is we're going to include limited routes. So we've already had consensus on having it in ordinance, having it six AM to ten PM, having it year round. And now we're, we are going to include in the ordinance the limited routes that were proposed on um Isaac's map uh of limited routes and, but also include uh a piece of road from, uh that goes east from Walgreens to Valley Road, goes north on Valley Road to East Mineral Street and goes west on East Mineral Street to Broadway. So that was the expanded limited route.
Thank you.
And I was, can we clarify on the parks? There was discussion about a road.
Oh, and the piece of Mitchell Hollow Road that goes to the camping park, what, what's that, Mound View Park?
Mound View.
Mound View Park entrance.
So, Madison, that would be Madison Street. Mitchell Hollow is not until the county.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It goes into Mitchell.
The, the route name technically changes at the city limits.
Oh.
It's technically East Madison Street, but I understand the intent.
So yes, East Madison Street, then I'm sorry. I always thought that was Mitchell Hollow Road. I should read the street sign.
But also continuing, so it just stops at the park. It goes East Madison just to the park entrance?
Right.
Okay, so I think now Steph is clear on the routes that should be included in the draft ordinance. Um, thank you for clarifying that and we can move to the next agenda item if everybody is comfortable to do so. Okay, so um, one moment while I get to that section. All right, so um uh, uh, back when the uh discussion first took place about the Legion Park Event Center, um, former city manager Karen Kurt had agreed that the city would cover the cost of bringing utilities to within five feet of the uh new event center building footprint. Um, we've come to the point now where uh that, those bills um have been issued by Alliance Energy for the electricity and the gas. Um, and in order to cover those bills, it was decided um by the city manager back then that those would be covered through uh the city manager contingency line item. Um, so this uh request is simply to get approval to amend our current two thousand nineteen budget to transfer funds from that line item contingency uh to the parks' outlay budget to cover the cost of uh bringing the electricity and gas to the um perimeter of the event center building.
Questions?
I make a motion to approve budget amendment.
You can't.
I was gonna say second.
You can't because we can't, this is on for information and discussion. It's way too late. Uh, any questions on this by anyone? We have a fight down here about adjournment.
Well, I move to accept on now, I lean, but I also second on the.
Well, I don't know. There are two people down here that move to adjourn. You pick who you want, Candace, and then we'll vote.
But Stockhausen is going to be the second.
Okay.
I believe so.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
About adjourning?
No, just because I, I figured I should ask it through the meeting, but we moved on. So on the last item, can I ask one more question?
On the transfer item or on the UTA, ATV?
I just wanted to know if we wanted to discuss the expires date, like it sunsets or we have that crossed out and you need that information for your draft.
We have information and discussion at the next m- meeting, so it could be brought up again then unless you wanna discuss that now?
Yeah, I think.
No.
I think we're done tonight. I think we have a motion and Candace is ready to call rule.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian? Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries, we are adjourned.